Select and empower to guide and direct us. And we do pray today for wisdom that they might make the right choices that will enhance our lives together. And I pray for a unity of our community, that we might not be torn apart by all those things that might fracture us but might truly be of one. And I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay. Pledge allegiance on three. One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Deb, how about roll call?
Counselor Corumba. Counselor McPurdon.
Here.
Counselor Woman Carr.
Yeah.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Counselor Man Cory. Counselor Man Gibson.
Here.
Counselor Man Forbes.
Here. Mr. Mayor, I believe you will have both Counselor Man Cory and Counselor Woman Corumba joining later on by phone. In order to do that, the council members who are here making up the quorum will need to vote to allow that to occur.
Okay, make the motions and allow those two in.
Okay. Motion, a second.
Counselor McPurden.
Aye.
Counselor Woman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Counselor Man Gibson.
Aye.
Counselor Man Forbes.
Okay. Number six.
I'm gonna head it off.
Uh, mayor, attorney number six.
Yes, first item on the agenda, and I apologize, there's some statutory issues I need to address going forward first, just to make sure I get it on the record. But the first item for consideration, the resolution of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, adopting final millage and levying an ad valorem taxes for the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, fiscal year 2223. Fiscal year 2223, proposed final ad valorem operating millage is point 0.8173 mills or 81, or .8173 per thousand dollars of assessed property value, which is equal to the prior rate. This proposed millage is greater than the rollback rate of .07248 mills by 12.76 percent and the levy of the annual tax said from before. The millage rate is established to provide the funding for the fiscal year 2023, 2022-2023 budget, and the resulting increase in ad valorem taxes is necessary to fund various stormwater improvements, transportation improvements, environmental projects, community aesthetic projects, and other capital projects. I apologize, but that is a requirement of statute that when we do not adopt the rollback rate, that we must identify the percentage above the rollback rate as well as the uses of the extra funds required. And with that, I turn it back to the mayor for a motion on the...
Do we have public comment first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got this.
We jumped ahead on five, I'm sorry.
Okay, I want to make a motion to...
Could we have public comment?
Yeah, we need to...
We skipped public comment.
Okay, yeah, public comment.
Sorry about that. Obviously, I'm gonna be talking about Agenda Item Six, the ad valorem tax. And it, to me, feels a little bit like deja vu because I remember being here last year at the same time, discussing the same issue, et cetera. And so I'm here to express my opinion that the city council should strongly consider reducing the ad valorem tax rate. If you remember back in the August 17 meeting, the city council voted both on the electric utility franchise and the local communication services tax to continue them. These taxes should not have been fully approved as they took advantage of inflation and had a double effect on the taxpayers. More so, these taxes were intended to sunset, and now the taxpayers are getting a sunburn. That said, I think it would be the right move for the city council to reduce the millage rate from the proposed 0.8173 to a flat 0.800 rate. It appears from page five of the documents presented in the agenda that there is about a 15% increase from last year in the ad valorem tax budget. I have been told that the difference between a 0.8173 rate and the flat .8 rate is about $250,000 of income for the city. Okay? I have also heard the argument that if the rate is put at .8, then something in the budget will have to be cut. I believe firmly the city can find a sharp pencil to cut $250,000, which is only about .3% out of the proposed $73 million budget. I have been around in about District Three, and I believe other districts likely also have less fortunate residents. This $250,000 is likely mostly their money, as they are likely not protected by homestead limits. Please consider them in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
On either the millage rate or the budget? I see none.
Okay. I'd like to make a proposal that we take the millage rate down to 8.000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Could we have a discussion of keeping the millage rate the same?
Well, this is your comment, Cory.
That's what my discussion would like to be, like, could you give an argument why we wouldn't keep it? Or you want me to make an argument why I think...
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, thank you. I believe that we should keep the millage rate the same. The difference is that inflation is keep going up and up and up. And we all are thinking that there's more money coming in because the homes that have sold, sold for phenomenal amounts of money. But we're not gonna see that for a year, when then the new taxes go back out. So we won't see that money. So we're almost diving into our savings during, I think stagnation, but certainly inflation that is rising in anywhere between eight and now 11%. And so everything is going up. So when you say nothing has to be cut, it will have to be cut. I mean, Nicole had so many great ideas for the parks, and then, but when she came back with the first, she said, oh, and we got a new bid. It was over a million dollars what we had originally anticipated and had been quoted. So everybody is getting new quotes. The quotes stay good for less and less time. And I believe that if we keep it the same, the fire commissioners, they lowered it. The county lowered it a little bit, too. So there's two other lowerings. So if we keep, because we're government light. We want to deliver to the people the projects that we have set. I mean, we want the little, you know, T-league park that, you know, for the smaller T-league. What is it, um, T-ball? T-ball? And then the skate, what is gonna be delayed because we've cut the budget? And it's, to some people... Is there someone on the line? Chris. And that, um, I don't know. And so I believe that the millage should stay the same, especially given that inflation is going up. Other entities that have way more money than this city has has lowered their millage. We're hitting into our savings, and there are storms still coming. I mean, people are worried about a storm next week. I don't tend to get hyper nervous about storms, but there's precautions coming. Irma cost us $7 million, and we had to go into our savings. But if we already have gone into our savings, where do we go? We go to debt. We're already paying off the debt that we had to go into to buy the property due to a lawsuit. So, and that's quite expensive monthly. And you've commented about it a few times, Mr. Mayor. Debt is no place we really want to go. And in one year, we can lower the millage, I think even greater. But, and Jesse, you'll be on council for sure, and Mayor, you'll be on council, so you guys will get your wish, so lower the taxes. And, but right now, I don't think it's a fiscally responsible thing to do.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Yes, Jesse.
Okay, thank you. I mean, the government light...
The one chance at the, at the apple here.
Yeah, good, no, this is it, good.
Debate over this.
I believe that the government light option would be cutting the budget. That's what government light means. We're always a year behind, so the argument that we won't see it for a year really doesn't... We're always in arrears. That's how it works. So that really isn't something that we should base this on. Inflation is a factor, but the fact that we're having inflation doesn't mean that we, as an entity, can absorb it better than the people. The people are being hurt by inflation significantly worse than we are, and you can tell that by the increase that we've had in ad valorem, which would more than offset. So this idea that we're gonna go into debt over $250,000 is, I mean, it's, it's not accurate. It's just not accurate. $250,000 doesn't put us in debt. We had significantly much more come in than we anticipated that would more than cover that. So that's really not the issue. The issue is we have an opportunity, we've had three opportunities to cut taxes. All the other entities have done that, and we have been reluctant to do that. We are, even in this rocky economy, doing okay as a city, and a sunset is supposed to be a sunset. The ones that didn't, that got away from me. There's nothing I can do on that now. This is the last stand we have if we're gonna cut taxes for the city, and I think we, as a council, owe it to the residents to do so.
Mr. Mayor, would you ask Lisa?
No, no, you're done.
No, no, ask Lisa Robertson to just...
No, you're done. You had your say right now, okay? We're...
This is Chris Cory. I'd like to make a statement. Hello?
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
Yeah, something to say, Fred? Chris?
Oh, I like that.
Yes, I'd like to ask Lisa Robertson to go over the document that was emailed to me this afternoon with respect to the impact of a cut to the millage rate up to eight point, or zero, 8.0, in terms of the tax valuation of housing in Bonita Bay. Lisa, have you got that document?
Hello, Councilmember Cory. Let's see if we can get, it's on everyone's desk. I think he's referring to the red document. If I can get Addison, I'm not sure with this being up here, how I get the PowerPoint on. He wants this on the, it's my information, I just don't... He's getting it right now for us, council member. And, and just so you're aware, all the council members have that at their position receipt. Information requested, is this everyone now? Oh, thank you. I should have told you, you're the middle one. Good evening. We were, staff was asked at the last meeting to provide a real estate tax projection, which you have before you, both in paper form and on the overhead. We were asked specifically to come up with the value, the average homestead property taxable value, that is highlighted there, is 340,000. And then we were further asked to develop some scenarios for properties that were higher in value, to see what the dollar change would be to those homeowners for the different millage rates that you see, and then also the revenue change to the city. So what we have here on the slide, the first, I don't know how to point that, oop, what did I do? There you go. Oops, that's okay. The first one there is the current rate that's in the proposed budget, 08173. And you can see the values for the different levels, taxable value levels of property. And then you see that the next scenario is the rate that's been proposed, 0.800. And you can see those would be the city, this is just the city's taxes now. And then you'll see the dollar change. And then we also showed the other millage rate that was discussed at the last meeting. This was the direction we were provided. So 07928, that is the one that actually brings down 30% consistent with what the county has done. And then you see that the individual change is there. And the bottom is the reductions in the city revenue for both scenario, reduction scenarios that were discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
I have a question. Now, that's, all those numbers are only the people that are homesteaded. It's the 39% of the people, 61% of the people are gonna pay 10%, and this is only 3%. Is that right?
Well, this holds true because these are just taxable values. So say I'm a homestead person, and my house is valued at 340, I'm gonna pay the same tax rate as someone whose house, who has a business that's valued at 340. So this holds, this percent, this dollar savings holds true for everyone. Now, what we didn't do is we didn't go from last year to current year. This is the change, this is what the change would be between the millage rate that's in the draft budget, 8173, and the two changes. So we didn't go from prior year to this year. The 3% and the 10% is coming from what you paid last year to what you paid this year.
I don't, I didn't follow you. You're telling me that the homesteaded and the not homesteaded are gonna pay the same?
If, based on their taxable value. Their taxable value is the same. The taxable value itself could be the same if it's a commercial property or a residential property. So that's what the scenario we're looking at now.
So for example, Mayor, for the $340,000 taxable value, somebody, I don't know the difference about, I'm making this up. So if their house was 400,000, but then they had the homestead of the credit of the 20,000, they're being taxed at 340,000. And then if someone does not have homestead and their taxable value is 340,000, they're both being charged the same amount. It's based on the value after the discount.
Yep. This is net of the 3% or the...
So the discount's already been taken out.
Well, if you're not homesteaded, you don't get a discount.
Correct, correct. You would be valued at the 340,000.
You'd be paying the 365,000.
Well, so what we're saying, Mayor, is if a house is not homesteaded and its taxable value is 340,000, that is the amount you receive. If they're, what Lisa's trying to relay is that there could be a house that's worth 400,000, they get their 20, their percent discount.
10%, 10% is the cap on the non-homestead. So everyone does get a discount, if you'd like to term it like that. It's a cap. So every piece of property in Bonita has a cap on it. And when it goes from one year to the next, but where it lands, what we're looking at is just where it lands.
So these numbers have already taken that into account?
Yes, exactly.
So those are the values.
Well, 365,000, what would be at 10%, right? Without the homestead. You're not, you're not showing me...
The homestead's already been accounted for.
Well, not if you're not homesteaded.
Then that's the value, the taxable value.
Well, let me finish my comment. I would also point that in our, in my conversations with CBR8 regarding the Bamboo Village project, one of the things that they pointed out was that construction costs have increased 30%. Now, a lot of our budget is, is public works related and reflected in our CIP budget. So, you know, when we talk about inflation being 11, 8, 8% or 13%, you know, we have to take into account, that's not everything. And a lot of what we do as a government is public works, and the inflation rate in that area is 30%. So I don't see cutting the millage rate when we know costs associated with road construction, drainage ditch construction, and the like, what we want to do in the parks is going up so much.
Next. Brad, you have anything to say?
Yeah, I, I could vote for the .80. I'd like to hear what Amy has to say, then we vote. I don't know, is she on the line yet?
Is Amy on the line yet?
I'm, I'm, yes, I'm on the line. I'm currently unmuted, but unfortunately, I'm in the airport, so I'm at the most quiet place, so it might still be a little bit noisy. I just have a couple of comments. I do think that, I understand a lot of the, well, some of the perspectives that's been expressed here, because, you know, there is a philosophy that we want to try to keep taxes as low as possible. I think that my original idea to maintain the tax rate of where it was made sense because the movement from 8.71 to 8.0 was basically de minimis, and I agreed with the public comment, sorry, commenter that said that, you know, 250,000 or whatever that number is, is not that significant, and that it could be found in the budget, and it could be easily found in the budget by just reducing the unassigned fund balance. I do want to make a comment on this, several, some issues that have been raised, that, you know, we have such a big appreciation in the market value or the grand list of the city. Because we've had such a big turnover, and if you listen carefully to the property appraisal comments that he's made in public in the newspapers, is that that is the biggest contributor to why all municipalities are getting a big increase in their grand list. And this means that the new owners, that, you know, they should, when you buy a new house, you expect to pay the same rate as which the former owner had at the elevated rate at which you bought the house. So our residents that were like last year's residents and didn't sell their homes would have a relatively stable market value. So in regard to minimizing the burden, the tax burden on those people, I think we, we are still addressing it by maintaining the same tax rate. And I think the point that Laura brought out comparing the various taxing entities, where they are, the fire service, the Lee County, where their, you know, their mill rate starts at like five points something, and ours is less than one mill. So when you, when you start at such a low rate, you cannot significantly affect the tax burden by lowering it. And the point that has not been discussed at all, which is my real concern, is that I, I'm sorry, is, is the fact that, you know, we are gonna be facing a very uncertain economic environment. I'm just gonna wait a minute, that should end soon. Well, because we are facing an uncertain economic environment in the future, we know what happened the last time we had a significant turnaround in the economy, both in market values and, and possibilities to work and pay their bills. I would rather have some security, and I think the notion of reducing the unassigned fund balance is not a prudent one. So for security and safety, for the fact that most of our people who haven't sold their house are still gonna be at roughly the same market value, and we have a good percentage that are homesteaded, and the fact that what we're talking about doesn't, it's gonna affect upper-income people much more than lower-income people. And, and if there's a dispute about what had happened previously on, on those special revenues that we kept the rate the same, which is still below what everybody else is paying, then we can, we have an ability next year to change it, if that's really a serious consideration. But right now, we're, we are facing a totally uncertain environment, so I'm still in favor of maintaining it. I could be persuaded, if everybody else wants to go that way, to go to .80, but I think it's a meaningless gesture. But if we want to do that, you know, it doesn't affect the city that much, but I think we're kidding ourselves if we think we're really altering the tax burden to people who need it.
Okay. Mike, you have a gut?
Yeah, well, I'm in favor of going to .8000. And I do have cuts, or a major cut for the budget that would accommodate nearly the $239,000 that we would lose by dropping it to .8000. So like I said, I'm in, I'm in favor of doing that, and if we're ready to vote, and we can, I don't know if you want to discuss the budget cut now or on the next thing, which is the budget. It's probably cleaner just to keep it at the millage rate now.
Yes.
Okay, it's my turn. This, we have, the city has received $16,888,000 through our governor. We have also received $7 million through our federal government, which we have not spent yet. That's $23 million, which is two years' ad valorem income. The city can survive without more money, where the people that have to feed their kids, they go hungry and they don't, they, you know, everybody that works for the city is gonna get paid, okay? The people that work, there may be a recession, who knows? But I don't see where the city really needs $230,000 on top of the $73 million that they've, they've got ready to spend. People voted for me, they didn't vote for the city, they voted for me, and I would like to lower the burden even just a little bit. And anybody else who'll call for a vote?
Seconds.
Counselor McPurden?
Aye.
Counselor Woman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Counselor Man Cory?
No.
Counselor Man Gibson?
Aye.
Counselor Man Forbes?
Um, aye.
Counselor Woman Corumba?
Just to clarify, because I'm not sure I cleared it, is it .80?
.80.
Yes.
Um, uh, yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, so the rate is 8.8000. Thank you, folks. I appreciate that. Okay, moving along here.
Your next item is a resolution in the city of Bonita Springs, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 2022-2023.
Yes, I moved to the, to adopt the budget.
Second.
Lisa needs to come up and give you just a little bit of an adjustment based on the millage rate.
Well, I do have a cut that can be made in the budget to accommodate...
Would you please ask permission?
Mike has something.
I raise my hand. Yeah, I...
Go ahead, Mike.
I would propose that we remove from the CIP the 200,000 for the quadrant at East Terry and Old 41, or actually West Terry and Old 41. Currently, there's $200,000 in there for a study. And just knowing that area very well, I don't need a study to tell me that it's not a good idea to put that there. A quadrant reliever road is not really gonna help any of the traffic situations there. I, you should all have this printout I made last night, just describing why. Because most of the traffic that backs up, it's because of the constraint at the railroad, and with the cars going straight or making a left turn at the roundabout. Anybody that can make it up to the roundabout can easily make a right-hand turn. So we don't need a back road for making right-hand turns. And then there's some other issues there, you know, we're basically taking out a parking lot that the city just paid to put in. You'd have to do a taking from five different parcels and pay the people for this land. There's also a creek that runs right along there. There's five, there's multiple DEP wells on that one site where the parking lot is, so they may not even let us build a road. So I don't see why we need to spend $200,000 on something that most likely is not gonna work to begin with. And that would also free up another, I think it's three and a half million, that's in out years, on the CIP. I would second that, if that's a motion. Yes.
Any other comment? I agree with Mike.
Can I hear what Matt has to say, just in response, or no?
I, I, this is a, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm trying to find a quiet space, but I'd like to speak to that point.
Just one moment, Amy, please.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I came outside, it's not any better, so I'm gonna go inside. The, the point that was brought up about the... Um, the, the point that, um, was brought up about the, what was termed in the CIP as a quadrant plan, I think that's probably not accurately named, because there are other, uh, issues that are, I think are more important about looking at that area, one of the which is safety. Uh, those retail, that retail, uh, line there with the parking that, that borders Old Forty-One is not at all possible to safely exit by backing up into Old Forty-One. So I think the point of doing the study is to see if there could be possibly be a, a redirection behind that retail area so that it would flow better. And, and if we, if it were, I agree that it may not be as important as a network, but just for that, the safety reason alone, I think we should explore it. And Mike, I don't think that, I'd rather have a professional tell us that it's possible to do that than just has us just look at it and say, does it work?
Okay, uh, I'd like to say that coming over the railroad tracks and taking a right is too short, it's like twenty feet to make that turn in there. If you were coming out, the people coming over the bridge at the railroad track, that would be very unsafe. We have Baxter Avenue, which is open to allow you to come into Maria's Restaurant, and I think, I don't see any reason for us to spend the money on that, we have other things to do.
Could Matt just?
I'd like to hear what Matt Feeney has to say.
Well, I think Councilwoman Karamba probably touched on some of the, some of the issues there. This area, um, but Councilman Gibson did as well. There, there is a known contamination site that's documented, uh, which could very well create a challenge, um, at the northern edge of this, you know, of the concept. However, when we were doing the downtown renovation project on Old Forty-One, um, there was a concern, we actually did look at parallel parking along that corridor, which, which would have been a, you know, a more safe condition. Um, however, it just wasn't practical with the, the spaces that the businesses had existing, and, you know, when you reconfigured it, that there wouldn't be that much parking. So, you know, I can, you know, maybe a study would help you see some alternatives, uh, but there are some, some significant challenges as well. I mean, there, there would be condemnation, there's contamination, uh, and significant contamination is my understanding, um, that, you know, may or may not be able to be overcome. There, there are certainly concerns on the, the face of Old Forty-One. I, I think when we concluded the, the renovation project, kind of the consensus was, you know, that project would be a impetus for redevelopment, potential redevelopment, and maybe as some of those properties redeveloped, I know one gentleman at the time was assembling property on both sides of the street, and maybe as they redeveloped, you, you could get a safer condition and have that type of dialogue about access. So I, I don't have a clear answer for you. Um, I, I think both, uh, both concerns exist on, you know, each side of that issue.
But it's okay to move it down.
Well, I, I would remove the two hundred thousand for now, that way, because we're, we reduced the budget by two thirty-nine, so this will accommodate that.
Second.
So the motion on, the motion on the floor is adopt the budget with the, with the removal of the one-line item, with respect to Terry Street Quadrant Study.
Call for a vote?
Could I just ask?
Does that include the out-years, too? Does that include the out-years, or is that just?
Of that line item, yeah.
Okay, so that and any CIP money associated with it.
Which means that we couldn't do the street behind Maria's all the way down?
But that, that is this project.
But you're removing it for the next fifteen years?
Yeah.
We, you can make a CIP next year if you want.
It's just a study, a sidebar on, and I look at it and I say it's not worth the trouble.
That, that whole area should be redeveloped. I, I don't think we should be doing the, the road or parking back there for something that the property owner should have to take care of.
Exactly.
May I just ask one question? When we lower this, doesn't everything get changed? As, um, Councilman Corey said, you know, construction costs are up thirty percent, um, gas is going to go back up, everything else will happen, so by eliminating that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it's just going to be, this is, you know, distributed to other places. That's, that's, and that's, I think, what Amy and I and Chris are all somewhat concerned about, is that we're going to have less revenue, but our prices are going to go up, 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 and up. And we promised an awful lot, so we, do we need?
We already reviewed, we're bringing in by two hundred thousand. And so this is to accommodate that we just reduced the budget by two thirty-nine, we're going to shave off two hundred.
But doesn't the budget have to be then, like, prioritized? Or do we need to, like, say what's going to be done first, second, third? I mean, are we going to do something like that?
We adopt it as is and then take it off.
I don't think so. Arlington.
Okay, let's, the city manager, please organize this.
If you remove the one line item of the CIP, you still have your prioritization along with your strategic priorities, which we identified in the CIP. So for one, actually, the motion is to remove the one year for the study, but then also the out-years as well. Um, so there would be a slight adjustment to the overall budget, which Lisa would be able to calculate.
If you didn't do that.
Numbers of expenditures.
If we just did this year.
Could I just ask about Mr., Councilman Deputy Mayor's, uh, green sheet, that we do the bamboo parking? I, I'd like to add that and put it on a high priority. Can we do that without, like, if we approve the budget, how does that fit into it?
So you currently have a CIP for, for the, for the Banyan Tree property? Um, what, what, I think what, in the, in the future meeting we have coming, at the council meeting, the, um, council member, I mean, Deputy Mayor Gibson is proposing, um, to fast-track that with a design bill project. You would, you would need to first get the contract with, with a quote, and then if it is above the amount that you have currently budgeted, that's when we would come back with the approval of a contract and possibly a budget transfer.
And do we have pre-approved contractors for this kind of thing?
We have, um, we have a couple of ways you can deal with that, but probably if you want the fastest delivery of construction, we have an existing, um, pre-negotiated, you know, overarching contracts. Obviously, the pricing, you know, comes when you, you get the work, but we have for design builders, and so they, they basically, the contract, essentially what you're doing there is you're hiring the contractor who's going to perform the work, or hire the subs to perform the work, and, and that type of relationship, some of the subs are the engineering firm. Um, and that would be the, the quickest way to get, for us, to get anything done. We've, we've done it with the baseball fields, it's actually how we did the downtown.
City Hall, too.
And we, we, this, currently, we have a handful that are pre-selected, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, vote, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
The amended budget.
Um, with the, with the removal of that one item, with the removal of that one item?
It's already, you have enough votes to pass.
Correct.
Well, I'm going to say no, then. I, I think we shouldn't be doing that, that particular removal, and I think that if we want to lower the bu, budget by two fifty, we should ask the staff to come back with a proposal. But I'm going to vote no, but I'm in favor of all the rest of the budget.
Okay, well, how do we do here?
Councilman Purdon?
I'm in favor. Councilman Gibson's.
Okay, motion passes. City Attorney, are we ready for a adjournment? Do we need a public comment, or? We're over, we're over five thirty.
Ready for Chris's vote?
Yeah, Chris voted.
I voted, Laura.
Thank you.
Can we adjourn this meeting?
Right, wait, Mr. Mayor.
They moved the approved resolution, the removal of that item.
That's what I restated, though. We're good.
Can we adjourn this meeting?
Another public comment.
You have another public comment on your agenda?
Okay, public comment? We've got about twenty minutes.
I didn't plan to speak tonight, Dwight Esmond Paradise Road area. Um, I had no real problem going to the point eight zero, it's a nice round number. I think we should have kept it at the, uh, original rate, but I just want to say, Mike, Gibson, thank you. You, you did the hard work, and I think you came up with a good idea, and I appreciate it.
Your name?
Suzy Valentine, uh, eighteen-year resident of Bonita Springs. I live on Ragsdale Street in Old Bonita. I'm an owner, taxpayer of three properties currently. A twelve-year member of the City Tree Advisory Board, past president of the Gulf Coast Garden Club and coordinator of the Blue Star Memorial Highway, uh, the marker and the dedication on the northwest corner of the Banyan Block. And I thank those of you who attended, many of you were there. Um, I'm a longtime member and active board member of the Bonita Springs Historical Society, and I'm a master gardener. And the philosophy of that program is right plant in right place. That can apply to people, too, right person in right position. I care about this town. I have volunteered in so many areas to help make this a great place to live, whatever your age, occupation, background, culture, bank account, social status may be. We, the people, resident citizens, vote for our city council, who in turn are responsible for hiring our city management, and they oversee all the many departments with control of what goes on and what isn't allowed. Somewhere along the line in recent years, our elected council voices seem to have become deaf to we, the people. Ideas for changes or improvements are sent out to consulting firms who come back with ideas from around the country, but too often with little knowledge or consideration of our local wants or needs. This is not Naples or Fort Myers or Estero. We used to be named survey, early surveyors camped along our river, then named Survey Creek. But the surveys that have been conducted recently here seem to have been done by concerned citizens, trying to get our elected and appointed officials to listen to us, and it doesn't seem to be happening. If asked, most of us do not want apartment buildings along our river. That property is currently looking beautiful, with many mature trees.
That's not in this meeting.
I'm talking about what you're just approving, something in your budget. Many mature trees shading the natural landscape, it's a perfect site for community activities, perhaps enhanced with some simple, uh, large shade structures. How about taking the example of another small town, which pulled itself up from nothing after the tobacco industry collapsed? Lake City, South Carolina, is now a lovely, historic, prosperous town, which works with its citizens and their historical society. Check out their website, that's Lake City, South Carolina. They started by building a charming boutique hotel. Tourists were attracted by their offerings, and gradually the town grew into a real, small town with a big bike, bright future. Sound familiar? That's what the theme Bonita chose four years ago, but it seems to be forgetting. Think about having an architecturally appropriate hotel on that property, inviting visitors to share our town without adding daily commuter traffic to our already overburdened roads. That's what Lake City and Naples did. Fifth Avenue started to revive when they built the Inn on Fifth. Stop listening to the developers with their love for art, with no love for art traditions, only their bottom lines. Baron Collier was a good man and did great things for Southwest Florida, but leave the Colliers in Collier. Keep Bonita, meaning pretty in Spanish, in Bonita. Please let we, the people, speak and tell you what we want, and then please listen to us. Remember, we do vote. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody, anybody more public comment?
On the budget meeting, or?
On the budget.
This is only on, this is supposed to only be on the budget.
No, this is, this is open public comment at the end of the meeting, so.
Is this open for the next meeting? That's one of them.
No, no, the next meeting.
Save the items, if it's on the next agenda, save it. Save it? Yep.
Okay, I propose we, uh, adjourn this meeting and come back at six o'clock. We'll adjourn.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you with gratitude and thanksgiving for this free land in which we live, and cherish its freedom and liberty, and cherish the blessings we enjoy. We are also so grateful to live in this wonderful part of your creation. We pray, our Lord, that in this meeting and in all of the deliberations of our chosen leaders, they will be granted wisdom and insight, the ability to hear, the ability to ask the right questions, the ability to bring together different agendas to be a unified whole. We do pray for unity, we pray for the continued growth, prosperity, and quality of life of this place we love. And I ask this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen, thank you. I pledge allegiance on the count of three, one, two, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Deb, we go roll call.
Councilwoman Karamba?
President.
Uh, City Attorney, do we have to bring them in again?
Uh, yes, I would recommend so.
Okay, yeah.
Make a motion.
I make a motion, will you let?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Yes.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
We'd like to do things a little bit backwards, on the days we have too many.
If she gets done, right? Okay. Uh, let's see here, approval of the agenda, mayors welcome, you're welcome to come here. I'm glad to see the local people are here. It's September, a lot of people, it's too hot or muggy or something, but Bonita is nice in the summertime. I love it this time of year. You get a little shade, you get some lemonade, you got it made in the shade, so to speak. Okay, any public comments on the agenda items? Any public comments?
I already made mine.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Cullum Hasty, Bonita Springs resident, and I have an issue here that I kind of feel like I dropped the ball a little bit, because I didn't think there was any possibility of these trees getting cut down. But, uh, I've, I've been in love with trees for all my life, pretty much, and especially big, beautiful, healthy trees, and I have to bring these particular ones to your attention because it may be too late, we'll see. But right now, the location of these trees is, is part of the problem. They are, they are so incredibly surrounded by dense foliage, like thicket of Brazilian peppers.
Is this on the agenda?
I don't believe so.
No, I'm just a public comment, I'm just.
The public comment on any items at the end of the meeting.
Oh, oh, that's at the end of the meeting? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't mention it.
I didn't realize that.
Agenda items, I'll make it.
Okay, should I wait? Okay.
Yes, please, please wait. We won't be long tonight, hopefully. Okay, Bonnie?
How are you? I think I got it straight, this is an agenda item. Uh, I'm Bonnie Whitmore for the record, and I want to comment on the proposal green sheet sponsored by Mike Gibson, putting in twenty-nine or so additional parking spots on the Banyan Tree parcel. We know the Banyan Tree parcel has a bigger and longer strategy, but this would be a really good start to get some parking places right downtown in support of the existing businesses, and also the new ones that are on the cusp of happening, such as rooftop Riverside and all the other construction things going on, with no impact to the sheriff. And I just think it makes good common sense for the city to do something positive in that way, with minimal, it's not going to hurt the trees, it's not going to cause any more pollution, all good reasons for us going forward as a city. And on the flip side. on the Banyan Tree parcel. We know the Banyan Tree parcel has a bigger and longer strategy, but this would be a really good start to get some parking places right downtown in support of the existing businesses and also the new ones that are on the cusp of happening, such as rooftop at Riverside and all the other construction things going on, with no impact to the sheriff. And I just think it makes good common sense for the city to do something positive in that way with minimal, it's not going to hurt the trees, it's not going to cause any more pollution, all good reasons for us going forward as a city. And on the flip side, I have, I guess you can call it a, it's a comment, but I don't know why the city does not have parking signs sending people over to the depot lot or to that fabulous biotreatment plant. I've been down here for so many occasions, and those spots are empty. When are we going to get some signage to tell people where to park? Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you, Bonnie. Any other public comment?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Bonita Springs thirty years ago. And I, too, like the previous speaker, like to speak in favor of Councilman Gibson's green sheet. I think taking advantage of the opportunity for extra parking spots in those downtowns, a really necessary finishing touch on that downtown. As we all know, we spent a tremendous amount of money with one clear goal, which is to revitalize that downtown, to make it great for everyone in the community. I see this site every day from my office window, right across to that library. And through that same office window, as I walk the streets of that downtown, I see all the encouraging signs that we have down there. And there are a lot of them, the beautiful parks that we have, the businesses that are growing. But there are a lot of obstacles, too. The derelict tenement apartments, the pawn shops, the check cashing spots. I mean, I was walking that street just today with a restaurateur from Fort Myers, trying to convince them to invest in our city and open a great place for the citizens of Bonita. The same citizens that regularly drive all the way to Naples to dine out. And the same citizens that work at those same restaurants outside of Bonita and drive there for business. And walking that street, we ran into a lot of issues. In fact, at the Banyan Tree site itself, on city property, someone near the site where we had a shooting just a number of weeks ago.
You're going to turn left into the colony.
We had a sign that was posted on city property that says, "We buy junk cars." That's the type of stuff that we're dealing with. And, you know, I could just tell as we were walking the streets and he was seeing the problems that he had a lot of questions about that area and about how wise it would be for him to invest money in that area. And you know what changed his mind? When he heard that Baron Collier would go there, that Baron Collier would invest in our city. And it reminded me, too, of an experience I had in this room two weeks ago, where a certain word came up. It came up from our own real estate consultant, CBRA. We're asked to do calculations on that site and in our downtown. And they called the area unproven. Unproven. What a sad term for an area that is the center of our community, an area where we've spent tens of millions of dollars over two decades. So how do you go from unproven to proven? Well, we've got to complete our steps. We have to do the finishing touches, just like Councilman Gibson has suggested with taking advantage of this parking. And we have to move forward with proven partners. And who's more proven in this area than a firm like Baron Collier? And so the real beauty for that project, and it will bring a lot of tangible value to us. In fact, if you do a rent roll and you look at current rents, median rents, for the properties, the restaurants, and the retail, and the apartments, and you use a three percent growth rate over time, and you add up all the taxes, because the lease says they'll pay any and all taxes, you get, over a lifetime, something like $350 million. Do the math yourself. That's a lot of money. But we're going to get a lot of intangible benefits, too, because it's going to finally make our downtown proven. So thanks for your time. Thanks for your leadership of this city, for seeing through misinformation and the continuing us down this path so we get the great vibrant downtown we've been working for and investing in for decades. Thanks kindly.
Thank you. Anybody else? Matt? You're on deck with me.
I think you got one more.
Okay, well. Yes, yes, sir.
For the record, my name is Jim Magnus, resident of Bonita Springs for over thirty years. Our family is building the Rooftop at Riverside project on the corner of Reynolds and Old Forty-One. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I'd like to comment on agenda item number ten. I like the green sheet suggestion to concentrate on the parking per DPZ plans for the Banyan Tree parcel now. The parking shown on DPZ option number two doesn't affect the sheriff's substation or any other ideas that the council may look to do in the future. You can decide later on adding a splash pad or a secret garden or benches. You can decide later on lighting the Banyan Tree. You can decide later on repurpose of the sheriff's substation. All other phases to that property can be done later. We need the parking completed so that it doesn't become a detriment to the other projects being built downtown. It's our hope that the parking could be completed as designed, per a design-build option, with hopes of being completed before our Rooftop at Riverside project is complete in the second quarter of 2023. This new parking will provide for overflow for the library, local businesses, and events at Riverside Park. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, okay, here she comes, a little redhead. You redhead tonight?
I don't know, purple. I think it's purple. For the record, I'm Trish Leonard. I'm a resident of Bonita Springs District Two. I'm also the president of the Downtown Alliance and a business owner. I have to agree with some of the folks that were up here earlier. Thank you, Mike, for suggesting on A, on the discussion of the design for our downtown area. You know, I sit down at the Downtown Wine and Coffee, and I know many of you have probably been there, and you can hear the trucks that go downtown. You can't even have a conversation. So it would really be nice to, to not only have the parking, but maybe think about moving those trucks eventually off of Old Forty-One. But the parking we're going to need, and if you're going to ruin something, you might as well just get it all done now, try to get that parking done. And then as things grow, and I'm excited about the Baron Collier project as well, as well as all the other things. And I want to make one other statement. I have a PR business, as you all know. And I had a client come in who was considering moving to Bonita Springs downtown to open a business. And when he saw it, he said, "No way." He said, "Not the way it looks right now." And I have to agree with what some of the businesses are looking like down there. Like Kyle was saying, that the, you finally moved the car that was growing grass out of it, out of the pawn shop, where now it's an auto sales place, and also the check cashing. So he ended up moving to Naples. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Matt, I think we're on deck. We got that proclamation there. And Arlene, would you join us, please? These two people, together, they have forty-six point seven years of service. Matt, I don't know, he split these three quarters. Public Works in one quarter, Assistant City Manager. And Arlene is our city manager. She's been here for sixteen years and has worked her way up. And that's amazing, everybody loves her. So, we're, okay, we're here today for ten years of service. Time goes by. You were a young man when you came down. Presented Matthew Feeny as the twentieth day of August 2022 in appreciation and recognition for ten years of public service to the city of Bonita Springs, Florida. Signed, Rick Steinmeier and Audrey, Audrey, Arlene Hunter, City Manager. Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council, if you just give me one second, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Matt Matthew Feeny for being my right hand every day. And I will guarantee he's also working weekends and evenings when any incident comes up. These ten years are a true example of your dedication, not only to the city of Bonita Springs, but its residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good work for dealing with us.
Okay, we go to Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation on that? Call for a vote.
Councilwoman Purdon.
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Okay, any comments on the council? Okay. Mayor and council items, I have a couple items. These, we're getting into the voting election period, and people putting signs all over the place. They're illegal, most of them. I want to have Tony and our city attorney get together. And one suggestion was is that we have these highly paid code enforcement officers that go around and pick up these signs. And they bring them in to the code enforcement office. And if the people want their signs back, they can pay a fine. We've got to do something about this. People want my vote, but they don't know the law. They're breaking the law.
Mayor, I think what you're referring to is mayor and council member reports.
We're on discussion A now.
This is mayor and council.
Ten A.
Well, is the mayor and council, it's not on the agenda, okay.
Correct. And the mayor, you have the opportunity to bring that up on your number fourteen. Any items on the agenda for discussion of mayor and council items would be mayor and council member reports.
Okay, Mr. Gibson, you got ten A for parking?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Any comment?
Mayor?
The only comment I have.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes, I am.
May I ask some questions? Or is it someone else speaking? I can't really follow everything so easily.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. I have a question about the need for parking. I understand that there is an area that is being leased by Lee County that is supposed to be, supposed to be eventually a parking area. Have we explored getting permission to use that as a parking area? That's my first question. So I wondered if I could get the answer. And I'll give you both my questions at the same time because I'm still on the phone. The second one is, I think people have referred, and I believe that Vice Mayor Gibson's proposal is for the second alternative among those that were given to us. And that's the one with the parking, with like a street going over by where the library is. Could I have some, either Matt or somebody suggest? Because I think that what that is doing is determining that we're going to choose the second alternative. And I, and I know that when DPC was here, I asked if we could do things in pieces, you know, if we could do a part of it at a time and then follow through with it. If we go ahead with the parking and have that parking with the line, with the street going through it, does that interfere with the other alternatives? So are we really voting on the second alternative?
I don't think so.
That's my question.
I don't think so.
I can clarify. So to give a little history, I believe what Councilwoman Caram was referring to is when we originally worked with Lee County to develop the library at that location, there was a square kind of carved out of the Banyan Tree parcel in the southeast corner that was to be designated for a potential lease by Lee County for overflow parking for the library. They released us from that requirement as we did stay on for a while because they wanted to see the trends after COVID. They didn't see a need for it, so they did release that out of the original agreement for the old library. I do believe in the negotiations with Rooftop at Riverside, there was discussion about that, should we want additional parking there, that there might be an agreement of future parking at that location from the developer. When the alternatives were proposed by DPZ, they reviewed what the original land lease was for the old library and felt that that took too much of potential park property. That was their recommendation. And so they redesigned those parking spaces in the eastern boundary alternative. So, so the, the idea that would be next, as we discussed, is that the capital improvement starts October one, is that we would do a workshop, that we would discuss all the alternatives, and we would not be required to pick, if you picked one alternative, not every element of that alternative has to be. The idea was to gain public feedback in a public workshop process to see, do we want a splash pad? Do we not want a splash pad? Do we want a secret garden? Do we want pathways? All of those would be elements, as we've done other park projects, Terry Street Project, others, where we designed elements that we wanted in to come with a final plan. I understand this green sheet, and Deputy Mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, you're just asking for just the parking portion of alternative two. You're expecting that we would still move forward with the plans to have the public workshop and discuss all elements and then come up with a comprehensive plan.
Correct. This is just for the parking.
So choosing, so choosing that one with that, the one that's identified in, in the parking and alternative two would not affect our ability to make all these choices? Would that foreclose us in choosing any of the others? Because the others didn't have that in there.
So just to clarify, Matt's showing me, and option three, if you did want those alternative buildings, that would be something that might have to be reconfigured because it's closer to that parking lot. But it doesn't exclude the fact that you could, you know, put buildings there in the future. It just might slightly have to be reconfigured.
Okay, I mean.
Mr. Mayor.
I didn't understand you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Are you ready? Got your questions to answer?
What I was saying is, as Matt was showing me, there is an option three that shows the two flanked buildings on the corner. The one building would probably have to be readjusted in some way on the site because it would be adjacent to that row of parking. But I think what I understand is that we're not being asked to make a decision on the buildings at this time. It's just that parking, and then we'd have to reconfigure how that layout would be. And what I understand.
Go ahead.
All of these were conceptual ideas that DPZ had presented. We still would need engineered drawings to move forward.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do, I just comment real quick question. Do we have the ability to max out parking anymore? Because we're only voting on these, but there's still other spots around it. Maybe we just hit all the parking now if we can, max out what we're going to do.
That's what I would go for.
And then just give them the max parking and then.
Could we make a recommendation? Let us be that we look at it because some, when DPZ did the concept, it was removing some island trees that are required by your land development code. So we would need to make sure whatever we're proposing is consistent with the land development code. This was all conceptual in nature.
So you would come back?
We would have to come back anyway because the dollar amount of a contract requires council group.
Okay, well, we need the parking during season. Fred?
Yeah, just one, be sure that we look at not only the 90-degree but also angle parking because that's easier to get in and out of on a, on a street that's got traffic that you're going to back out on too.
We're going to have a workshop on this, right?
On the rest of the park.
On the rest of the.
Not on the parking, but the rest of the park.
We have some phases before that happened. The actual funding doesn't start till October 1. We would contract with our consultant to do the public workshop, get feedback, and move forward that way separately.
Okay, so we're going to vote to move forward.
If somebody, I'm sorry, just to clarify, some council people were suggesting that they were interested in a more comprehensive parking plan. Would, if that is really the interest of the council, wouldn't it be better to incorporate all that into our decision here?
I don't think so.
And we were just talking about the other parking spots that the DPZ showed on their drawings, but they, it's conceptual and we can't do all of them because of the required tree plantings.
So we'll look at it again when staff comes back next week.
So even for the parking, we're going to do workshops or we?
So let me just kind of summarize everything we're at. The DPZ concept plans were just high-level conversations to have a conversation. Nothing's been engineered, nothing's been spaced out. But there's, the motion is to move forward with at least the concept two parking because we think we have good feeling on that. And when we get to the point of the contracting and actually start to look at the, ground truthing it, bring back the possibility of adding on some additional parking, expanding it a bit, if that's possible.
If possible, yeah.
Call for a question. Go call please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey? Councilwoman Corey?
This, I had to mute, aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. Advisory Board Meetings, this is. Mike, you get to start this off.
Okay, yeah, it's just another thing I wanted to bring up. I've been contacted by a few people that are on advisory boards. They didn't want me to name their names, but, you know, they were concerned about the frequency of meetings being monthly. And they just felt like not enough got done at each meeting each month. They figured that if we did them less frequently and the meetings might be a little bit longer, it would be much more efficient. And also, I think it would be better for staff's time if we did meetings quarterly instead of every month. So mainly, I'm asking that, you know, staff, you know, review the governing documents and bring back recommendations for improved efficiency and other possible adjustments for consistency across the boards.
Second.
So how do we proceed with that? Mike?
Can I, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Which would also deal with like which committees we should stay, you know, tied to, which committees we might even not participate in? And then also suggestions on what people's roles are?
Oh, Councilmember Carr, I think what you're referring to is there's outside committees that are beyond the city's control. I think Deputy Mayor is discussing those committees under the purview of city council.
Okay. I have to add the other aspect.
We don't have control over those.
I'll make a motion to quarterly meetings on the ones that we can, now there are some that we can't.
My motion includes excluding zoning board and LPA.
Yeah, of course, yeah, of course, yeah.
And special events if they, sort of like on need basis be accepted.
They could always, you know, schedule an extra.
So here's my recommendation on this. There are some boards that have some land use involvement and then there are other boards that don't. The land use stuff is the issue that we have, basically property rights at interest, and we have timetables we have to respond to. So with respect to consolidating, I would just have an exemption for anything that's on a pending land use issue. Everything else is discretionary.
This is Chris, you know, for example, liaison with the technology committee. And I would like to say that if any committee wants to meet more often than quarterly, then they ought to be allowed to be able to do that.
That was exactly what I was going to offer, Chris. I had the same statement. But I agree that we should not require that they meet every month because a lot of times there's not that much to talk about. And I think we should think about the pressure on the staff to participate.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir, I think if we go to quarterly for everybody other than the land use ones, and then if they need an exception, then we can consider them as they come up. Because I think if we say you can do them every month and you have one or two persons, people on a committee, that is, maybe these are the committees that we're discussing that are taking an excessive amount of staff time. Now, staff is still going to have to prepare. The building's still going to have to be open, we're still going to have to people there, we're going to still have to take notes. So it doesn't even fix the problem if we give them the option to do it monthly. So if we're going to do it quarterly, I said we just do it quarterly. Because if we, and then obviously, if there needs to be one, we can make an exception. But if not, saying you guys have the choice if you can do it or not, puts us back in the same position that we are in.
Okay, could the city manager make that decision?
I think we could come up with some language that shows if there's an immediate need. For example, as Councilmember Carr was saying, if there's 4th of July coming up, there might be a need why special events needs to meet two months in a row. But from what I understand, the intent was to, there are language, there is language in some of the enabling ordinances and resolutions for these committees that require them to meet monthly. And what I understood is Deputy Mayor was suggesting that we remove that requirement. And then if there's an actual pending need for business, then of course, there would be a reason why they needed to meet that way. But we could probably come up with some language that addresses that.
There's another issue I'd like to address. If we start going to the, instead of, instead of going to something as simple as quarterly, but we start saying they can meet as needed, well, then we have another problem, which is we have in our codes that if people start to miss meetings, they're removed. Well, what if three members want to meet every month to discuss ongoing project, but other two members don't want to meet? Then we, that starts to add some complications. So when we bring something back to you, we'll try to put a chart together that indicates what boards are affected and if there are any boards that have considerations that they want to, they want to speak more on to, specifically, maybe they can come and make an argument for additional meetings. I get nervous at just saying they can have meetings whenever they want, not just because of staff issue, because then there's a problem with other board members. There should be some expectation by those members, what their involvement level is going to be, and they shouldn't necessarily be forced along.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, do you need a vote on that? No?
Yes, I think we need a vote for a direct.
Okay, move to quarterly with the option of the city manager coming up with a.
We already have a motion and a second on what I read earlier.
Okay, call for a vote.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumba?
No, I want to follow Arlene's suggestion. That's not what we're voting on, right? We're voting on the proposal as written?
Of having staff look at it and come back to us.
All right, and they would come up with some language so we could have some flexibility in there. Is that correct?
Correct, I was suggesting quarterly, but I'm asking staff to review the government documents, bring back recommendations for improved efficiency and other possible adjustments for consistency across all the boards.
Okay, I'm in favor of it.
I'll change my vote to aye.
Okay.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Hey, motion covers, carries, okay. Now we got a public hearing, second reading.
Yep, this is an ordinance to see Benita Springs, Florida, mending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3 Development Standards, Section 3-263, bikeways, facilities and pedestrian facilities, Division 6 Open Space Buffering and Landscaping, Section 3-535, piping material for use in right of ways, and Chapter 4-Zoning, Division 18 Home Occupations, and Division 37 Subordinate and Temporary Uses, Subdivision 3 Mobile Food Vendors Providing Conflicts of Law Providing Perceivability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors and Modifications That May Arise From Consideration of Public Hearing and Effectively.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment?
All for a vote?
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
I think we had one comment from staff.
One thing, I wasn't, you guys caught me off guard, I'm so sorry. We had one item we wanted to discuss with you on the mobile food vendor section about the portable restaurants. I'm so sorry. So we just, LPA, we did mention to LPA the request by council to discuss those items, and then we as staff had some internal discussions, and Mike's going to go ahead and provide you some information.
Good evening, council. Mike Fegan for the record, I'll keep it brief for you. So we suggested the changes of allowing them to have the provision for porter potties and temporary sanitary facilities, along with the mobile food vendors. We're requiring a cleaning plan, a removal plan, and we have very strict locations on where they're allowed to go. Based on previous discussions with council, we had asked for LPA's feedback on that particular change. They voted to go ahead and leave it as is, to allow the porter potties, but we understand that's still somewhat of a contentious issue. So staff has no problems if you wanted to amend that section to remove the allowance of porter potties completely. That's it.
I don't like the porter potties. They get turned over too often.
Some are quite.
I'll amend my motion to not allow the porter potties in.
But people still get to wash their hands, right?
Does the second.
It would require them to use the restroom facilities that are part of the brick and mortar commercial establishment.
Ah, good.
Okay, call for a vote.
Does the second change, agree to the amendment?
Second.
Second, yeah, so.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye. Thank you, folks, motion carries.
I have no items on my agenda.
City Attorney has no items tonight?
Nope.
Oh, very good, city manager's items.
Yes, we just wanted to announce that the approved, our contractor for the roundabout renovations at Terry Street and 041, there's some pre-construction meetings going on, and we understand the work will begin in October.
October, that's just next month.
Yes. And additionally, I wanted to remind everyone that the EAR Evaluation and Appraisal Review of the City's Comprehensive Plan, we have a second public workshop on September 29 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Dr. Banyan will be conducting that workshop. We will also begin an online survey starting the 29th. Dr. Banyan will review that survey that evening. That will be open through December 16 online. So anyone can remotely give their feedback to the survey.
Okay, very good. Mayor, July?
14.
July financial report.
There we go, Lisa.
Lisa.
Good evening again. We have, we're going to be, your monthly financial report for July. Your first slide that you have is the general fund revenue. That's your regular recurring operating revenue for July 31st. And this gives it, gives you a pie shape by type. So it provides some really great data. As we talked about, avalorum taxes, we get, collect those in the beginning of the year, and that section of the pie reduces as we move forward. General fund revenue. This slide actually compares fiscal year to date for July 31st on the current year as compared to the immediate following year. As you can see, our economy this fiscal year to date has really been doing well in a lot of the different categories. That's what we're seeing here. I will make a note that July was the first month that we have seen this fiscal year a reduction in sales tax. About a 12% reduction. That's in line with what the state has told us. And please know that the budget you adopted earlier today incorporated the budget's estimate and the actual slowdown of some of those revenues. So just let you know that we anticipated those. Yes, sir?
And state shared revenue, is that your sales tax you're talking about?
It's in there, yes, it's in there with some other things. We get some other types of revenue, but it makes up that whole category. So we do anticipate this to look different next year, but we've budgeted for that. We're following the state's guideline, and they do a fantastic job with their economic forecasting. We'll get to that in a minute. General fund expenditures, this is really our regular recurring operating expenditures. So you can see they have gone up this fiscal year, fiscal year to date, as compared to last fiscal year. Again, not unanticipated with the inflation that we're all aware of, and we have built that. We hopefully, for the operating, we've taken that into account with our next year's budgeted numbers as well. Restricted revenue. This, these are our major sources of restricted revenue. As you'll recall, restricted revenue has to be spent on the specific purpose from the enabling legislation. There are two significant changes that I want to point out to you on this slide that we tend to talk about every month because they are significant. The building permit fees, the first item up there, the first data series, we have a reduction this fiscal year. That is a planned reduction where we've reduced our fees in order to reduce our fund balance in that. We, that may sunset, it's going to come back to you in January. We'll take a look at that and see how the economy is doing and see how we're doing in that. And also the road impact fees. As you can see, we're significantly higher than we were at this point last fiscal year to date. Now, we do know, as we talked about last month, we're seeing a reduction in the single-family home permits that are being pulled. We're seeing that number fall, and that's as predicted by a lot of the experts. So that when that number falls, sooner or later, your road impact fees will probably follow. So again, your budget model next year prepares for that. But we like to let you know how your budget is planning for those things and that we do anticipate that change. We have two slides that show cash balances. On this particular slide, the first couple of data points are your general operating funds. What we do with these, when you see these balances go, they're the last three fiscal years, again, it's a snapshot, July 31st. We accumulate these funds, and the unassigned data series is the only one that's not encumbered or projected for a specific use. When you see general fund assigned and all of your other restricted funds, those are populated and they fund your capital improvement program. We really like to accumulate these funds from a financial standpoint. It's more cost efficient to pay as you go for those as opposed to borrowing for capital improvements, if we can. So when you see these accumulate, they are designated and appropriated in your budget for your capital improvement plan. And this next slide talks about your other types of restricted revenues. That last one, other funds, that's primarily your downtown debt service. Now to our exciting section. The Florida Long-Term Financial Outlook, that was issued by the state of September 9. It is an annual report that's issued by the state, and it's a longer range picture of the state's fiscal position. It includes data for the next four fiscal years, and it incorporates the latest economic and demographic data, and it also includes projections for revenue expenditures statewide, which really impact municipalities such as ourselves heavily. The report continued to note the risk of reduction in sales tax collections. And again, the budget has provided for that. The expectations may be lower as consumers return to typical purchasing patterns. And it was stressed that the impact of continued inflation would have on household budgets. Again, it's incorporated in the budget estimates that we have, but we like to make sure you're all aware of the data points and the comments that they're tracking on our behalf. The economic forecast growth rate for the short term has been lowered in this report. The most significant projected reduction is for the fiscal year '22, '23, the next fiscal year that we're heading into, the budget you adopted tonight. Now, the good news is that the long-term growth path in this report for the state remains consistent to pre-pandemic levels. Very positive indicator for our state. The housing new construction is projected to drop by 23% in fiscal year '22, '23. As we were just talking about, we're already seeing that here locally, and I don't think it's, it's not unique to Benita. They project it statewide. We know that, we're projecting for lower amounts to be received. Continued annual declines in new construction are expected for most of the next 10 years. And then they project returning to pre-pandemic levels beyond the 10 years. This is, this is interesting as well. 60% of the Florida baby boomers have reached retirement age in Florida. So in total, 32%, for the first time ever, 32% of the Florida population is now 58 years or older. It's a big swing in our demographics. So what they indicated was this is going to necessitate monitoring of the impacts on the economy, the labor force, and the healthcare services and the tax collections because they believe this shift will change the way we predict things and the way we collect things. So I think that's it. So I thank y'all for your attention.
Yeah. What portion of the state revenue sharing is sales tax? Do you have any idea?
It runs about 74% sales tax, and the remainder is a fuel tax. And we allocate that appropriately in your budget. Sales tax is unrestricted, and the fuel tax will be for road-specific projects and maintenance.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Why will there be impacts on tax collections with the older generation?
Well. Well, they just behave differently from an economic standpoint. Their purchasing patterns are different. You know, their income levels are different, fluctuate differently, and they just, the demographic data, they take that into account. But they do behave differently from a financial projection standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council reports. As I said earlier, I'd like to do something about these political signs that are illegally placed on the road right of ways. I've heard every excuse in the world. "Oh, I didn't put it there." "Well, it's your sign. You're responsible for it." "Well, I've got people I don't know that are putting them out," blah, 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 blah. We have code enforcement officers that go around and pick up these signs. I've got Tony, he used to go around and see the signs, and then call them up and say, "Move your sign." And maybe a week later, or two weeks later, or maybe never, they don't move the sign. So I said, "Well, pick the sign up." And so, talked to city attorney. He said, "Well, pick the sign up, bring it into the code enforcement. If they want the sign back, they can pay the fine for having an illegally placed sign." They want my vote, but they don't know the law. They're willing to break the law to get my vote. Well, they're not getting my vote. So I hope the city attorney and city manager can get together and come up with something quickly as we're getting into the election period. And there are rules and laws, and these candidates are not paying attention to them. I mean, I'm not talking just local. I'm talking state, federal, everything. They just ignore the own laws that they're supposed to be following.
I have a report, sir.
Yes.
I'd like to thank everyone for the wonderful ceremony on 9/11. Well-attended and went off smoothly. The fire department thanked the city for the use of our stands and all the equipment. And the cleanup went really well. I don't know if this is here, but it was a great job done by all. And at the MPO, they had a notice that there's a special seminar going on over days about grants, and they found out that the grants didn't have to, it's tied to COVID dollars. But you can take it out and just do multimodal. And so that's what grant we're going to go after. And I stepped by, and I gave the piece of paper to Ellie because it wouldn't be someplace I would go, you know? And she pulled out a copy and said, "Oh, registered." So yay, Ellie. She's so fabulous. And this wouldn't be matching, so it's pretty cool.
Okay. Jesse, you got something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank Matt, actually. You know, we didn't get to really say anything as counsel, but I mean, for those of you who don't know, who are watching or in the crowd, you know, Matt moves all the dirt in the city. He knows where every wire is buried in the city. He has, you know, he has a brilliant mind. He's a former Notre Dame guy, a vet to the country. He knows the history like nobody else. You help us be the city that we are. I know I'm on the phone with you on a regular basis, sending you all kinds of stuff, and it doesn't matter if it's the weekend or the night. I don't think of it, and I hopefully, you know, you don't either. You're always responsive, and you're always, look, you're always on the job, and you really do a great job for us. And I don't think that it's really, really understood when we're running a 60,000-person city with all the projects and the infrastructure dollars that we have going on. You're running point on that, and the award that we won downtown also, you ran point on that. So you've just been such a great addition to the city, and you know, we owe you a debt of gratitude, and I appreciate your service to the city. So I really wanted to say that. And next, I'd like to thank my colleagues who voted for the tax reduction tonight and avalorum. I think that, you know, it was a step in the right direction, and it's an important signal to the residents that we feel their pain and that we're with you. And things like that, especially in an election year, matter.
Okay, I'd like to finish my comment. I'd like the city manager and staff to come up with some ideas as to what we're going to do with the Dixie move. We've been sitting there. I remember it took me the whole first year in my office to get it painted, and it hasn't been, we haven't addressed that problem. So see if we can come up with something by the next meeting. It's going to be on the 6th, which is a Thursday because of Yom Kippur for our Jewish friends. So if you're a Christian, I think you've got to be a Jew first because we read the Old Testament. So I'm a Jew that believes in Christ. So anyways, anybody else? Fred?
Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead, Amy.
Can, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know when you're ready for me or not. I just want to make, I guess, two comments. First of all, Mayor, I agree with you about the political signs or any signs. I think that they should be treated the same as any illegal sign. They should be removed. I don't know what our policy is, what neighborhood services do, but I think there's no reason why we should accept political signs, but we don't accept business signs. Second of all, I do want to reiterate what Jesse said. I couldn't, I am wholeheartedly in awe of the work that Matt Feeney does, and I so appreciate his continued contribution to the city. And I can't believe he's been here for 10 years, and I hope he's here for many more years. And I am a very devoted supporter, and anytime I have a question, he is so complete in his answers, and that's what we need on the council so that we know what we're talking about here. So thank you so much for that effort, Matt, and I'm always there as a supporter. I know you'll continue to do a good job. And finally, I want to thank the council for putting up with my irregular communication here this evening in the airport. And I just want you to know that while I was sitting outside talking to you, they had to call a dog to investigate a package that was there. So I had to move, and so it was really quite an experience. So I finally got in the cabinet, and it worked out a lot better. So I'm now at home in our lobby finishing up the meeting. But I know it wasn't good on your end either because of all the noise and everything. So I appreciate your allowing me to participate in this way, and I look forward to having a real meeting in October.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Let's see, Fred, you got something?
Yeah, something I want to bring to everybody's attention, Matt, is there is an increased movement for people putting solar cells on top of roofs because you can save electricity that you're buying from FPL. You want to be sure before you sign on the dotted line that your insurance company, that is your homeowners, will pay for the solar cells if they get damaged by a hurricane or windstorm. Most of them don't. And in those at least cells, solar cells, you're not insured, but the company is going to expect you to repair those out of your pocket, even though your insurance company's not going to pay for them. You want to check on that.
Fred, do you need a permit from the city to put them on your roof?
I know in Hunter's Ridge, you have to get an approval from the HOA. I'm assuming you probably do. Doesn't make any difference if you have the permit or not.
You're damaging your roof. I assume you got some holes in it or something.
Yeah, yeah, but the big thing is, there's, some insurance companies may not cover a re-roofing if solar cells are on there with a permit. Most of them will. Big thing is, they're not going to pay the money to replace the solar cells. So if you sign, and those things are not cheap. Look at these contracts that people are signing. And if you would have a loss, then you'd have to pay for that.
That's what I'm trying to cover these people. John, you got anything to say about these solar panels?
It does require a trade permit, so they would be permitted. But most of the time, when you start looking at putting the solar panels up, they do look at the lifespan of the roof and the lifespan of the solar panels and try to match those two up. So it's not really something where you look at it one or the other. Most of the time, right.
And your experiences at the insurance companies, you don't pay, don't cover that?
No.
Depends on the company.
The insurance companies, to this point, I don't think have been very consistent, or at least I haven't seen a lot of involvement. Most of what people have done is work through exactly what Councilman Forbes had said. You don't have a 20-year roof and put brand-new solar panels on with a 20- or 30-year life. If you're going to be doing that, you need to have a new roof on so that the solar panels on the roof have about the same lifespan. The last thing you want is to try to repair a roof when you still have life left in the solar panels.
Okay, yeah. Anything else? Mike?
I'm good.
Have a good night.
Motion to.
Public comment, please? There we go. Thank you for your patience. If people here don't recognize this guy, he's very important, sir.
Thank you. I have, back to the trees at issue here.
Name?
Colm Hasty, Benita Springs resident. And I have a, back to this item, I have a picture of where these are. It's a big and simple picture. If I could run it by you real quick, you'd see it. It's easy to understand if you see it up close, and it'll take only about 30 seconds of my time.
Pass it to Rooney, and he'll pass it around so you can keep talking.
Okay.
You got the Colm Trail. How long is your trail?
The trail is about a half a mile long, and we had, as a lot of you know, we had a survey done, and it went under, we finally got permission to take it under I-75 and all the way down to where the public sidewalk begins at, let's say, Dean Street. So I don't know what the status is now, but that's, it could easily go all the way down.
Few years ago, but it's still, if you like to walk along the river, that's it.
Oh, it's beautiful. The trail is looking great. The water is moving really fast right now. It's high, but the trail just looks terrific lately. It just keeps getting prettier. It's a beautiful trail. So I, let's see, the, right now, the location on that picture shows where the two cypress trees are, and I believe that those two cypress trees in that picture are the largest cypress trees in the city of Benita. No one's ever seen them but me, I think, because it was impossible to get to them. I canoed in there years ago with Dick Workman. We took a canoe in there. He's a botanist. Probably some of you know him. He's a botanist, rest in peace. And he looked at the trees with me and said, "No, these are great. They're viable. They should live another couple hundred years." So they're in beautiful condition, but like I say, no one's ever seen them. You couldn't even see them from a distance. You could just see a little bit of the tip tops of the trees. Now, as of today, you can see them. You can't get up real close to them yet, but the land's been cleared right now in that project. That's a project called.
What was the property?
It's called Midtown, is it Midtown USA? Midtown Benita. Midtown Benita, I think's the name of it. It's right on the edge of town, so it's called Midtown.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So it's, whoever owns that, I don't know, you know. But with the trees cut down in the next few days, it's going to be sad because they're a couple hundred years old and in beautiful condition. And like I say, I believe the biggest in the city. So we'll see what happens. I just wanted to go on record as saying that I didn't realize there was any opportunity that they could even possibly be cut down, but then I found out that they don't have any protection.
Are they protected around or better?
Yeah, they're like that, yeah.
They're not protected by our ordinance?
I found out they're not protected. I called Laura with whatever the department is.
You just wrote an ord.
I believe Midtown already, I defer to John Dahmer, but I believe they have their permits in place already.
Sad that the permits don't protect them, is my opinion. That was an error, if it happens. If they can be saved, great. If they can't, that's a big error.
Okay, John.
So the property, the application you saw for their rezoning, it had already gone to the tree board, and then it had come to you. Those trees were not protected under any of the approvals.
Before now. In the future, they would be protected?
They could be. I've got to check to see if cypress is included, but I think that we did make that change a couple weeks ago.
They're indigenous trees, yeah?
Correct, but not all indigenous trees have the same heritage tree protection. We did expand the list that you're referring to in that recent code change so that we have a significantly larger number of tree species that are protected than we used to, because I think it was just two types of trees before, and now we've increased it to, I've been told, all of the trees.
What about federal restrictions? I thought it was against the law to cut down a cypress tree.
Could I say one more thing?
Yes, to the mayor.
This is the only place in the United States where cypress trees exist, and there's really nowhere else in the world that they have big, I don't know if there's anywhere else where they grow at all, but I know the biggest in the world are in Corkscrew Swamp Sanctuary.
The Audubon stopped them.
Yeah.
Whatever's left.
But it's unusual that here we are, the only place where they grow in the United States, we have two specimen beauties, and they, you know.
Did you say they're going to be cut down this week?
Possibly, I don't know. I don't know.
Could the city of Benita Springs appeal the property owner?
Mayor and council, let us get with community development, see where they are on the project, and if there is any outreach that can be done, we'll discuss it with staff. But we cannot make any guarantees.
You don't have the law behind this, but we could petition, maybe ask them not to.
Just for the public's clarification, I do want to clarify, we do not have permission to go under the I-75 bridge. It's in a long-term plan. We are working with DOT. There's actually do-not-tresspass signs. I know the sheriff's office would appreciate me saying that. Please end your pathway at the end of Colm's Trail. We have a sign that clearly says, "Colm's Trail ends. Please do not go further than that."
Well, I was just told something by somebody that we, back when I was with the city, I was told by somebody that we had finally gotten permission to go under there with that project. I don't mean the public. I mean, just, that was, apparently the Department of Homeland Corrections said that, "Yeah, we can go forward with that project," but I lost track of where it went.
They have not given us the permission yet.
I'm glad you clarified that, because I knew we've been trying to get permission. Okay, anything else?
Ruth Condit, District 3. I just wanted to say that during the last meeting when Baron Collier presented their architectural renderings for the new project in Bamboo Village, I was rather surprised at the change in direction of the style of the buildings. It seemed to be a departure from the old Florida look that they were going to have. I know that this is not set in stone, and I do hope that in future iterations that they will go back and address a more compatible style with the other buildings that are in Old Forty-One. Thank you.
Suzy Valentine, I apologize. Earlier, I spoke because I thought this was the city council meeting starting. I came in time for a 5:30 city council meeting, walked in, and everybody's here, and people are talking. I'm trying to follow the agenda, and I thought, "What's going on?" Somebody should have perhaps been out there advising the public that it was still a budget meeting.
We are kind of in the form.
I know. You were having a budget meeting. I spoke then. Now, I'd only like to speak on behalf as a tree advisory board member, and talking about trees. We are a Tree City USA, which is a big deal, but it's no big deal. We have to keep up certain requirements. But it was addressed this evening about the proposals 1, 2, and 3 for the possible Banyan block, and the parking is approved. In all three of those proposals, no consideration seems to have been given for the trees that already exist on that block. The Banyan tree, yes. There's a huge mature oak tree along Old Forty-One. There are old mature pine trees, which are an unusual type. old mature pine trees, which are an unusual type of pine. They're not just the common one. They're all over there, and none of those trees were in the consideration of the three proposals that this consulting firm came in. It seemed to those of us who know the town there, the consulting firm didn't ever go there and look. They just went and looked somewhere else, and they planted palm trees all over the place. But we have beautiful trees here. We have beautiful trees in the Bamboo Village property. Please don't let them just make, come to the tree board and say, "We want to cut these trees down. They're heritage trees, but we want your permission to cut them down, but we'll replace them with a bunch of little, new little trees." That's the way the current legislation works. Respect our trees. Thank you.
Yes, on that sob, on the subject, this extra parking does not affect any trees, does it, Mike? I don't think so.
There may be some trees along there.
You should be able to put the parking spaces around the trees. Give it a try. Thank you.
We'll certainly look at that.
We'll see with our analysis.
All righty. Anything else? Guess we're adjourned. Go home, folks.